This is the first Tuesday of the month with Opaaca City Council meeting.
Only if you're ready, Sandy. All right. Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 4th, 2018, and it is 6:00 PM, and I'll call this meeting to order. And let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge allegiance to the new D E's.
Those little things, John, we're somebody.
All right. We'll ask Sandy to read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also take a roll for us, Sandy.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Laurie Chestnut. Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Prochazki.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum. Laurie had called, she isn't going to be at the meeting.
Okay. Thank you for that. Next, we have the consent agenda. These are items that we take with one motion and vote on that one motion. Unless there's an item on the consent agenda that council or staff would like to see moved to the regular agenda where we would vote on that individually. Hearing none, then we would take a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Keeland, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay. Under regular agenda, Sandy, it looks like you have a handout for us.
Under number nine, new business letter B three, a public transit lease agreement was distributed.
All right. And then one other thing, too, that under nine, letter E, we're going to table that for tonight. So if you want to just cross that off your agenda. All right. Anybody else? Again, looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Keeland, that we approve the regular agenda with those two changes. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we have a Opaaca Farm Market presentation by Sandra, I can't remember how to pronounce your name, Oliver? Oliver? Okay. Alvera. All right. So Sandra, if you would, just please step up to the podium. And we also have Kristi, too, right? Gabrilska? Okay.
So we wanted to talk to you a little bit about the farmer's market this summer. The Living the Opaqua Way Coalition has spent the last summer, really the past year, working to enhance the farmer's market, and we had brought on Sandra in an interim position this past summer to serve as kind of a pilot test for us, for a farmer market manager. And then we did write and receive a grant through DAT cap that will fund a farm market manager position for the next two years. And so we have a video that we, through a Leadership Institute program we participated in over the past year, helped us to put together a video to promote the farmer's market. So we just wanted to share that with you.
Video? Yeah, I think Josh is going to come out.
Okay. And we can just share a little bit more about the farmer's market this summer. Sandra worked to bring more vendors to the market in the past. I don't know if you want to speak to that a little bit, Sandra?
From Gravel Road Farm. My wife and I run the farm together, and we are selling at the Opaaca Farmer's Market.
So we like to come down Saturday mornings, kind of as we're planning what we're going to eat for the week, you know, whatever is in season, and trying to, you know, use that in our cooking, you know, look for peppers and tomatoes. We like to do.
Strawberries!
Yeah. We did see the strawberries as we locked up, so we've got to get some of those today.
We are at this particular market because this is our community. What motivates me is thinking of the customers that we see and who are going to be expecting us.
We've been coming to the market for a few years now, and so we, you know, know who stand has what, you know, what kind of things we really like.
We're trying to create community, not just sell food. We really appreciate having Living the Opaqua Way getting the word out for us.
Living the Opaqua Way is a group of individuals from the community that want to see a healthy, vibrant Opaaca. Today, we are here promoting the farmer's market. We're bringing events, so things such as carousel gymnastics, part of moving at the market, what we call it, for Saturdays this summer, where we're bringing, moving at the market. We also are working towards bringing music at the market and make it a place where people want to come on Saturday morning. We were able to hire a farmer's market manager, which is something that we have not had in the past, to really facilitate that organization of the market.
The market has grown since we started here over the last few years, and I've really enjoyed seeing more and more people coming out and enjoying it.
Our local business owners, they really enjoy seeing the market down here as well. We love having our farmer's market here. It brings more people downtown, it gives us more foot traffic, it's really good for all of our businesses to see the people come down here. It just puts everyone in a really good mood, because, I mean, how can you not be happy after fresh produce and flowers? And it's always good. It's just, I mean, just the way they display it makes you hungry.
We also have our farm-to-table dinner that we do every fall, and we're really connecting our farmers with our community. So we want people to know where their food comes from. Come on down to the market on Saturdays. We're here from 9:00 to 2:00 every Saturday from June through October.
We're here, we've got good stuff, it's a good value.
Here is more foods that are delicious in the grocery store. Coming here is pretty much like ice cream. It's delicious, and it's a treat.
So we're hoping to be able to use, thank you, to use that video to promote the farmer's market next year and throughout the next couple of seasons. But we, what we're really, what we really wanted to highlight is the fact that the farm market manager position helped to be able to make the success that we had this summer possible, because we really, in the past, haven't had one person who had just be able to put all their energy into the market. We've had people in the past bridge it. Herkett has done that, but she's also a vendor, and so we're just hoping to really, in the future, have somebody who can spend time really putting their effort towards the events that they were talking about in the video, the moving at the market, music at the market, and bringing more vendors and foot traffic to the market as well.
Yeah. So just looking at that video, having the market manager, as we've seen just from experience on previous years, trying to organize things makes coordination a lot easier, having one central person to come to answer phone calls, things like that. The moving at the market events we have for this summer, they were a pretty big success, and we're hoping in the future to have one possibly every month, every couple of weeks. It helps bring more business to the, you know, businesses on Main Street, and then it supports healthy living. Get carousel gymnastics, we try to incorporate different activities into it that are more physical. One of the biggest things that we tried to do with the market this year was just expand it so that it had a little bit more solidarity to it, and it would, you know, draw a little bit more attention, as we have the Stevens Point Market, which isn't that far away, and it's very well-established. A lot of vendors go there, it's, you know, has a high reputation. And this year, we got about 16 at our top in the middle of the summer, was about the cap that we had for vendors. And then, you know, obviously, as it got a little colder, we started dwindling down to about five to seven, but that's a huge increase compared to last year when we had seven at the max or eight at the max. So we almost doubled the vendor quantity this year, and then we had probably five new vendors that came this year that decided to stay. So we've seen a great increase this year just by having someone in that position.
And we just wanted to also think, we worked with Henry a little bit, but he helped us to have a space and support, IT support and an email through the city for the farm market manager as well, and we're hoping to have that continued support in the future.
Great. Yeah, go ahead, Henry.
I think the, it's pretty evident that we're having some pretty good success, but I did get invited to the aftermarket kind of pow-wow with all the vendors, and I think that was a real positive event. They, their last Saturday, they came down to the meeting rooms and they had a little potluck, and they kind of worked through kind of an overview of the year, and then sort of talking about next year. And ultimately, the farm market location is going to be a big issue with our downtown project. So to be able to get those vendors together to talk and figure those things out, and so I think that's a real positive for the market as well, just to keep communication.
And that was something that we weren't ever able to do, was to get together an official meeting at the end of the year, or as we're hoping to in the beginning of the season, you know, in the spring, to have people redo their applications, have everyone in there at one place. We can talk about issues that people want changed, and it helps vendors get their voice heard, and that helps with these crucial decisions, you know, we want all the vendors to be heard, so everyone can put in their input that way.
Any questions? Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for coming tonight. All right. Next on our agenda is, unless you guys really want to, but we're suggesting that we change our first city council meeting in January from January 1st to January 2nd, which will be a Wednesday, again, start at 6:00. So we're going to go ahead and take a motion on that, if you're okay with that, just so that everybody's in agreement. So I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Peterson, that we approve changing our first meeting in January from January 1st to Wednesday, January 2nd, and it will start at the same time, 6:00 PM. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Next, we have public input. This is for non-agenda items. If there's anybody in the audience, or council member, or staff that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, please just step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Any public input? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. We have a memorandum of understanding between the City of Opaaca and Living the Opaqua Way and UW Extension Service, and Henry, I think this is your.
Yes, sir. This kind of is just meant to formalize our relationship with the groups working on the farm market. I can tell you, Kristi and a couple of her colleagues over the past few years have worked really hard to identify and get grants. I think probably the most notable piece of this is to kind of run the payroll aspect of the farm market manager, because the UW Extension isn't well-equipped to do that, or Health and Human Services Department. You heard earlier that we do provide a small office space in City Hall. I can tell you, I never saw Sandra Harley at all there, because she's out working in the field and those kind of things. So that's, this just kind of puts down on paper kind of our role. All the cost, salary costs, personnel costs for the manager is being picked up through grants. So it would be just a matter of us running her through the, our payroll to document that and to have the ability to get reimbursed for that cost. And that's really, I think, the highlight of it. I don't know if Kristi wants to add anything to it. I think there's a attachment to a work plan, it's a little more formalized than what we've seen in the past. I'm not sure if Sandra's going to apply for next year's position or not. If she doesn't, the next manager would do something similar, sit down and plan the year's event, and it's envisioned through the agreement that someone from the city, it'd probably likely be me, would participate in some of the planning.
Counsel? You can see on page 57 through 59, the memorandum of understanding, and I'm sure you've all had a chance to take a look at that. If you're okay with that, then I guess staff is asking that you approve this agreement.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Prochazki, that we approve of the memorandum of understanding between the City of Opaaca, Living the Opaqua Way, and UW Extension Service, as it has to do with managing the city's farm market. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Laurie Chestnut. Mary Fair.
Aye.
Scott Prochazki.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Steve Hackett. Alan Keeland.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Awesome. Again, thank you for coming tonight. All right. Let's move on to the taxi cab. We have the Shared Ride Taxi Service. And Henry, I think this is yours again.
Yes, sir. Thanks. There's a few items related to this upcoming taxi program. I've reported in the past a couple times that I've been working on this. This procurement process, because there's federal funding, is pretty regimented, and there's a lot of paperwork with it, and you kind of have to dance to the DOT's tune on it. So we've been following their procedures. On the website, I prepared a report that was required to kind of highlight the procurement process. I don't know what kind of detail you need today. But the first item is really an award of the Shared Ride Taxi contract to Brown Cab. We did receive two proposals. We had a review panel involved. According to the guidance from the DOT, there were four factors we evaluated, professional competence, capacity, experience, and then price was the last thing, and price was 30 points, 30% of the score. And the valuation team reviewed the proposals and are recommending award to Brown. In that procurement report, there's letters from them justifying their selection and those kind of things that has to be submitted to the DOT. We do have Carl Schulte. You've seen Carl before with Brown Cab. I don't know if you have any questions of him. I think he's taken the mayor's lead and putting out some promotional material on the cab service. I don't know, Mayor, if council's interested in hearing briefly about what's going on in 2018, if they want a quick overview before we hit 2019, or if you just want to get right to the business. But Carl's prepared to kind of talk about where we're at this year so far, if that's okay.
Sure. Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, and council members. Thanks. I'm Carl Schulte. I'm from Brown Cab. Very glad to be here tonight. And I'm very glad to report that 2018 is coming in according to goals. We set goals, well, I can tell you that ridership will be better than it was in 16 or 17. Our record year was 14. We haven't hit that number again, but our ridership is clearly up. Our revenue is way up. We had a fair increase this year, and that has caused our revenues to be, this will be the record year for revenues. Those two things combined mean that the operations of the taxi cab service won't need any tax levy this year. The state grant money plus the user taxi fees will cover 100% of the operational costs of the program, which was our goal, and we'll come in at that goal this year. I've got to acknowledge that it's the drivers and the dispatchers who do the hard work to make those goals, and they've just done a wonderful job again this year. 2019 will have its own challenges. The state aid is expected to go down again, and so we'll need to take action to make sure the program stays successful in 2019. I've already had some meetings with city staff toward those ends. We expect to recommend a fair hike. We also expect to do different publicity things to try to bring in more revenues, and expect a very successful year in 2019.
Well, we've started discussions with the vets home to jump up their help with the local share, which is really much appreciated. They're probably 15 to 20% of the ridership. We basically post a vehicle out there for them. So they've been very good to work with on this. When we bid this service, it's actually a fixed price for two years, doesn't change, and then it has three one-year renewals that the city can enter into. The price is up. It's over, it's up 14% over what the cost per hour is this year. But as Carl said, we're anticipating a little bit less in government subsidy, so we're going to have to raise fares and do those kind of things. But we think we can make the targets. We budgeted $10,000 in levy this year for it. And again, as Carl mentioned, we're projecting not to have to use the levy for 2018. Operational questions will have to go to Carl necessarily, if you have anything on that. I could talk to you about it all day long, about the procurement, if you want that. But I don't know if you have any questions on this aspect of it?
You said we're going to not have to use our budget levy this year for 18? And if that's the case, can we roll that to help with 19's big deficit?
Well, it's a transit fund, and it's segregated from the city, right? So you could keep it.
We don't plan on having.
We don't plan on, but. Yeah.
The fund is in deficit from prior years where there wasn't enough money, funding, so it's only going to just fund, help reduce the amount that would be transferred from the general fund if there is a, if there's a positive.
Although, again, I want to correct something, or just mention that we don't anticipate that we're going to have a deficit in 19. So we're not.
But, yeah. It sounds like we're going to raise fares and different things to not have a deficit.
Right.
I guess raising the fares, I thought if we had extra money, but you're saying not.
Okay. Okay.
I don't want to price our customers out. I don't know what kind of fare increase you're talking. And then, few, two years, it'll escalate.
Well, if we don't change anything, Carl, I think the estimated local share was like $24,000, was it 25?
As bad as 30, depending on what the state aid came in at. And that number won't be known for a couple of weeks still. So we have different contingencies. Where do we have to move it if this happens or that happens? We are going to ask King for more assistance, as Mr. Velikar said.
Yeah. And the fare increase, we want to implement like right away. We have a public hearing requirement, so you'll see that at the, I think, the January 4th meeting, we're going to take that, or in January, we're going to take the fare increase.
So it requires that that be posted in a newspaper for the public to see 21 days before we'd actually, before the council could take action. So that's the process.
Yeah. And I think I thought I detailed in my memo what those projections were going to be. Yeah.
Good. We were actually talking about the 18, but are we leading into talking about the agreement?
Well, the contract, well, it's for 19 and 20, and the cost per hour is fixed for both 19 and 20. That was how the bid was structured.
Any questions of Carl?
I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was just wondering, with gas prices going down, how much does that help your operating costs? It's got to be huge, right?
So I wish I knew what the gas prices would continue to do, but of course, we're taking a, after taking a beating for a couple of years, we're quite happy to see the gas prices going down a little bit right now.
Yeah. Yeah, it all helps, right?
It does. The procurement process doesn't allow for us to go up and down with gas. It used to. It just doesn't currently, and that's, we had to bid a certain set number, and we had to make that bid a couple, a couple of months ago.
Yeah. I would imagine you watch the gas prices pretty close.
Absolutely.
And I don't know why it seems like Appleton is always so much, or is it, is it Appleton or Point is always lower, and we always seem to be higher than?
I was in St. Louis for Thanksgiving, and it was $2.01 a gallon.
Oh, my goodness.
So I've got to send the whole fleet down there to fuel up.
To that point, Carl, do you buy your gas locally from vendors, or do you have a big central fill-up that you have at your facility?
So Brown Cab and Running Incorporated are sister companies, and we bid for the best deal possible from statewide vendors. Right now, QuickTrip is our preferred vendor, and that might change if we get a different best deal.
So we're actually discussing things that are in two separate motions here, but that's okay. So Carl, maybe you could talk about the actual application that we need to take and the cost and your reasoning for the cost and so on? You're prepared for that tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and apologies, I believe the number's 31, 3140?
37.
3147 per hour, which is significantly greater. It's 14% greater than last year was. The way the procurement works is we get an opportunity once every fifth year to set the new starting point, and then that's a fixed price for two years, and then only colas after that. I don't actually feel like the DOT's process was very clear five years ago, so we kind of felt, well, first of all, we were glad to be here, and we always are, and we're glad to do work, but we don't feel like that that was a very good starting point five years ago, and we don't feel like the colas were very adequate. They were based on price of food mostly, and gas was doing something quite different. So this was our once-in-five-year opportunity to take care of labor costs, which really, our drivers really have been doing great work with very little increases, if any. And it also, insurance and other inflationary things have really, really hurt the business or hurt our abilities to do more in the contract. So we're very pleased and actually even proud to bid the number we bid. It's the correct number for 2018 going forward. Mayor Smith, did I answer the question or the direction you wanted me to go there?
Yeah. Well, it helped me to understand more of the detail, too. So I met with Carl last week, and Henry and I met with Carl last week, but currently, you're paying your drivers nine, was it 940?
So our starting wage, the best we can afford for starting drivers is $9.35 an hour, and there's really no benefits to speak of. So that will be improved with the advent of the new contract. It will be greatly improved.
Now, we have a, just a little bit about the grant application process. It's an online submission. We have to get it in. I believe it's December 10th this year?
12.
12, thank you. And we will submit, if you approve this, at the rate and the hours that have been provided by Brown Cab. We'll sit back, we'll see kind of where the subsidies are. We feel like it's a pretty conservative projection, and then we're going to go ahead and move forward with these increased revenue plans, regardless of what ultimately the federal and state subsidy is. So that gets put in in December, and we'll know. Usually, it's late first quarter, maybe before we even know where we stand with our grant application. So it's a little bit of a delay, but that's the process. We'll follow, Mayor. Assuming you would approve this at those hours, service hour.
So again, when we met last week, there was a deficit, meaning that the city would have had to come up with a share, which could have been as much as 40-some thousand dollars. And so before I even got to the meeting, Carl and Henry, and what's your?
David Low.
Yeah. Were there, and they had come up with some ideas. Yeah, we're there, and they had come up with some ideas to reduce that amount so that there would be less city share. And one of the last things that they really wanted to do, obviously, is increase the fares. But I do think, and that's going to be for a discussion in January, but I do think the fare increases are reasonable, quite honestly, knowing what the cost is of the other cab service that's available in our community, too. I think it's not going to be unreasonable to expect that people will expect some kind of increase, so. But they were able to basically balance the budget, meaning that we should be able to come in with, with no city share of this. Now, there's, there's no guarantees, obviously. I mean, depends on the grant, and it also depends on the riders, the amount of riders and the revenue we get out of that, and it also depends on whether the Veterans Home wants to agree to pay a little bit more, too, to have, to use our service, too. So we do have some variables in there, but we do feel, or I feel, good with the, with the budget that they're bringing forward, considering the increase, as Carl said, was just over fourteen percent, so. And I think that was a key goal of mine, is to make sure that the city would not have to pay any additional amount that the grant and the ridership would cover all of the cost of the service. And we did talk about other things, too, as far as marketing the cabs, as I saw a little differently and a little, different ways to get revenues that way, too. So we looked at all of those things, too. So I thought it was a great meeting. I went in there with the idea that I was going to beat them up on the fourteen percent, but I understand it, and especially when it's all going to wages, I feel that it was a reasonable request. Okay? So that's my synopsis of the meeting and why I think this is a good deal for the city, quite honestly. So what we'd be looking for is, we got a couple of motions that we need to make. One is to award the shared ride taxi service contract to Brown Cab Services Incorporated. So we'd need a motion to approve that.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
We have a motion by Keeland, second by Hackett, that we approve of the shared ride taxi service contract to Brown Cab Services, and this is actually a two-year contract, so any discussion. Sandy will call the roll.
I think, Scott, did you have a question?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What happens in the third year, Henry? Do we come back and we have to re...
Right. You'll have, you'll have an action you'll have to take. The DOT gives guidance on how much per hour this can go up. I know, like in year three, two years ago, three years ago, I mean, it went up less than a half a percent, the CPI.
It was governed by a cola. It was governed by a cola the DOT determined.
So they look at that, and they just say, contracts, this is all you can go up. But you'll have that option.
We'll have to re-bid on the option.
And then, quite frankly, I mean, we have the option to rebid it at that time.
All right.
But yeah, you'll see this for the third year.
I'm sorry. Any other questions? All right, Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Mio?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
And Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Sorry about that. We actually have two more motions yet, so there were three altogether. This one is just to give permission to go ahead and apply for the grant, so we need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Fair, second by Peterson, that the city submit a Wisconsin Department of Transportation Transit Operating Assistant Grant Application for 2019 based on Brown Cab's promotion. Proposal submission of same service hours of 17,185 hours at $31.41 per hour. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. And the last one just has to do with the vehicles. The city actually owns the vehicles, and we lease the vehicles to Brown Cab, and that's the way it works everywhere, correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we buy them and lease them for a buck, but they have to insure them, maintain them. It's all on their cost. And it is, this lease document that Sandy distributed is the template that the DOT gave them.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions on that? We need a motion then to approve that lease agreement.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Olson, second by Pritchatsky, that we approve the 2019 taxi vehicle lease between the City of Opaque and Brown Cab Services. Discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Paul Mio?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, council members.
We did both. Yeah.
I just want to make sure when you voted for the operation grant, in my memo, I asked permission to also apply for the annual capital grant opportunity that they put out. It's never guaranteed, and that they give you two years to spend it. So the, so we would like to make the capital plan attached in there, so I'd like to get permission to submit that grant application, because that's a separate.
Well, let's, let's go ahead and do a motion for that, then, because that was not my assumption. So do you understand what Henry's saying? It's a grant application to, to help purchase the vehicle, so we would need a...
I'll move to accept.
Okay.
Second?
Motion by Peterson, second by Hackett, that we approve staff applying for a grant for capital for the cab. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
You can do a voice vote.
Or I'll do a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Carl, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next up, we have the consideration and ratification of a tentative agreement between the City of Opaque, City Law Enforcement Association, or better known as WPPA, and Henry is going to talk about that again.
Yes, sir. All the persons, Keeland and Pritchatsky, Mayor Smith and I, we're on a bargaining team for the city. We had an initial meeting, I believe it was in early September, and then we came back a couple of weeks ago to arrive at a tentative agreement. It's in your packet, beginning on page 66. There's just a few items. The first really memorializes a side agreement that we have had in terms of swing shifts. As we do all, every time we do a contract, we do let the police management review it, make sure we're not getting too far out in front of them in terms of the impact of their management. There's some other things that had to do with fair share agreement that they worked on, and that's called the maintenance of standard, or fair share, and then the maintenance of standard. So there's more, more language types of things. And then I think the significant thing would be on the sick leave to just mirror what the non-reps have in terms of the HRA. If you remember back last year, this council approved the creation of these HRA accounts where, when you get the sick leave payout at retirement, those dollars go in there to be used for medical-related expenses. And this language is kind of, it reflects what's currently going on with the other employees. And then finally, the duration is two years, and then the wage adjustment would be January 1 of 2%. And then on December 31 would be a 1% lift, and then on July 1 of 2020 would be a 3% increase. July 1 of 2020. Have received word from the union that they have ratified it on their end, so it's appropriate if you feel comfortable to ratify it on our end.
All right. Any questions on the agreement? Again, I, before we actually make a motion vote on it, I want to thank Scott and Alan and Henry, obviously, for sitting on that. It was a couple of nights' meeting. It went, you know, it was smooth and everything, too, but it did take quite a few hours to get this done, so I appreciate that. Obviously, you guys are seeing the, you're, the one thing that probably everybody is looking at is the wage adjustment, and the 2% pay increase actually fits in with our budget, but obviously, you can see that even though it says December 31 of 2019, when we get to 2020, we have a 1% increase on January 1, basically of 2020, and then another 3% increase for that half year, starting on July 1. So as we do the budget, Kathy, for 2020, we'll have to keep that in mind, we, as we move forward with that. Okay? Any other comments or questions? We would need a motion to ratify this contract.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Keeland, second by Whitman, that we ratify the, the agreement between the City of Opaque and the law enforcement, WPPA. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
And Paul Mio?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Henry, thank you for that. Next, we have Justin, some resurfacing here.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So I've got a memo prepared in the packet on page 69. This is at our wastewater treatment plant at our 8,000 and 9,000 buildings. If you read the memo, you would see that these two buildings are our primary sludge storage and handling. We've got boilers, pumps, piping, and chemical storage. The next page, 70 and 71, I have some pictures on there to show you the condition of these floors, and basically, it's an industrial buildings. They're concrete floors, and we have them covered with epoxy paint, which protects basically the building, because sludge and chemicals can be corrosive and hard on concrete. So the epoxy covering is there just to basically protect the building and also provide, excuse me, some grip for the workers that are there. So as you can see from the photos, it's getting time where we need to strip this down and recote this. We're trying to preserve the integrity of the building. So we went out and got three proposals together, and we made an alternate bid where we asked for a 20-mill system and a 60-mill system. Now, what that means, a 60-mills is one-sixth of an inch, so that's actually pretty thick in the painting world. We threw the 20-mills in there just because we wanted to make sure we could stay in budget and then do analysis basically on the cost and see if it was worth it to do the thicker system, and that is the one that I'm recommending. I think for the proposals that we received, it's well worth the additional 40-mills that, while contractors there, it's just to provide three times the thickness that we would get from the 20-mill system. So as I mentioned, we, we did receive three proposals, and they're listed there on the memo. Crane Engineering, we've worked with them in the past. They do a lot of municipal wastewater treatment plant work, so they are a reputable contractor. So I am moving forward in recommending them. Beyond the pictures is information based on their submittal. They're providing information on their specifications, the painting system, and the such. So basically, that sums it up. I'm opening up to any questions.
Do we have any questions?
I do.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
There is such a large difference between the low bid and high, and TMI coding. Did TMI coatings have, do something different, use different materials, or, oh, why?
No, it's, the submittal, the, what they submitted was basically the same specifications or in the range of our specifications that we specked out. I'm unsure why they are so high. I know that they're coming from out of state, where these other two are within the state. Crane Engineering is out of Kimberly Sanchez, is based out of the Valley as well, so I'm assuming it's just from the large drive, so. Thank you.
Justin, what's the longevity estimate on something like that when you quote, is it every five years, 10 years?
We're looking at something that'll hold up for at least 20.
So Justin is recommending that we go forward with Crane Engineering, so I'd need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Fair, second by Olson, that we approve or enter an agreement with Crane Engineering of Kimberly, Wisconsin, for recoding of the 8,000, 9,000 building floors at the wastewater treatment plant in an amount not to exceed $17,200, and the money will come out of the wastewater treatment plant capital plan. Discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Paul Mio?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett. Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right. Justin, thank you. And the other item that Justin had on there, as I said before, that has been tabled. So we'll move on then to, is Josh around, or Henry, you're going to handle this? Creation of the administrative and marketing assistant position for Opaque Online.
Well, I can set it up. It's, there we go. It's a job description we felt that you should review and approve it.
Am I supposed to say, here's Josh?
The man behind the door.
For the past couple of years, as I've discussed staffing with Opaque online with Ralph, one of the ideas I've tossed out a couple of times is maybe getting someone to help us on an administrative level and do some of those tasks. When we hire staff, we look, our key qualities, looking for people that are comfortable with heights, and on a secondary level, people that can retain technical skills and do some a little more mechanically inclined. And sometimes those sort of people don't always translate well to being a salesperson or doing marketing or being organized in the office, but that's not the key criteria we hire them for. And a couple of times, we've discussed something like this in the past. It's always come up, you know, we're kind of small, maybe, you know, it's better off to put those hours toward the people out on the field. And in discussing a recent staffing shortage after some recent departures, we feel now's the time to give something like this a try. We're growing, we're still working through the expansion project next year. I think we grew, we've got about 25 new customers so far just from that project, and it's going to continue next year. And with as specialized as a skill set it is to get our typical employee in here, something like this is more general. I think it might catch more eyes, whether it's maybe another part-timer already on city staff looking for a couple more hours, doing some other office work, or maybe just someone outside the organization that's just looking for some small part-time work. We feel there might be a little easier to attract some people to this. The position in general would just do a lot of the office stuff, work on keeping inventory of our supplies up to date and let me know when things need to get ordered. They do a lot with customer service, following up with customers, surveying current customers and how things are working, and maybe being a little more proactive and identifying any issues there are. We developed a new customer survey that, you know, we're supposed to call it a week later and follow up with recent installs just to make sure everything's okay, and that falls through the cracks. And one of the things we're told a lot is people don't know we're here and really want to find someone that can help with marketing, maybe doing a little bit of cold calling to businesses that are located in areas that we're in, someone that's got more time to devote to developing mailers and flyers and that sort of thing, someone just to take all these little odds and ends that I don't have as much time... Someone just to take all these little odds and ends that I don't have as much time for, that the guys aren't as focused on, and kind of combine this into one person to help us in a positive manner, kind of on the customer service side. This position would fall into level four on the city pay scale, ten fifty-six to twelve sixty-seven an hour. And we're looking maybe to do a four- or six-month limited term employment, kind of start it over the winter, ramp it into spring, and just get a feel for how something like this works out. And if it's working good, we'll continue it. If we find it's maybe not meeting the goals we have, then we've got an easy out, move on and try something else or reallocate these hours toward our existing staff. With our two recent departures, our two employees that we do have with Online are pretty much close to maxed out, and that does leave some additional hours that I'm unable to allocate internally, and we've had no interest up to this point to kind of refill that role. So there'd be no budget increase. We'd just take our existing hours that aren't being used and allocate them toward this person. So that's kind of the gist of the position and what we're looking to do. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
So you heard Josh, that they're just basically reallocating some hours so that they can do some marketing and some administrative work there, which I think is a great idea, quite honestly. So I would suggest that we go ahead and move forward with this.
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion by Mayo, second by Hackett, that we approve of Opaac Online part-time administrative marketing assistant position. And also, you are approving then that job description that is on page eighty, starting on page eighty-three. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
And Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, next, we have license report fourteen twenty-eight, which is on page six of your packet. Again, these are pending payments of any fines that are owed to the city and a background check. So we would need a motion to approve.
Move.
Second?
Motion by Peterson, second by Keeland, that we approve license report fourteen twenty-eight. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We also have license report fourteen twenty-nine, which is a dance hall license. This one is actually on an annual basis, where all the other licenses are on a fiscal basis, but we would need a motion to approve these.
So moved.
Motion by Fair?
Second?
Second by Hackett, that we approve of license report number fourteen twenty-nine. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. All right, and I think we are ready for closed session, then. All right, we need a motion to convene into closed session.
I'll move for closed session.
Second?
We have a motion by Hagan, second by Keeland, that we convene into closed session according with Wisconsin State statutes nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent E, as it concerns the deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And the second item, Wisconsin State statutes nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent G, conferring with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
And Dave Peterson?
Aye.
And Chuck Whitman?
Thank you. Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.